...ten years, and he was, you know, like the back of his hand.
Well, she, uh, she...
Very good, although she was very upfront with the fact that she was just teaching us the basics. She didn't go into a whole lot of depth about it.
It's four o'clock. Time for this meeting of the City of Tallahassee Planning Commission to begin, so I'll call the meeting to order. To determine a quorum, we have four members here, and that's what it takes to have a quorum, so we do have a quorum. And at this time, I'll ask you please to rise, and Pastor Nutter, will you lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Thank you. Let's bow our heads in prayer. "Lord God, your word speaks and declares: A man plans his way; the Lord directs his steps." As we're involved this night in planning, we ask, "Lord God," that you would direct our steps, so that the decisions that are made here in planning would benefit your people. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Nutter. I'd like to take a minute and have the members of the board look over the agenda. If there's anything that you wish to discuss before we begin. Hearing nothing, then I'll ask you to look over the minutes of the meetings for March 18th and 16th.
I move to approve minutes.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the minutes as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Reports of officers and staff?
Staff is...
No reports at this time. We have no unfinished business, so we'll begin looking at new business. And we have no site plans tonight, but we do have plats, so we will have public hearings. And the public hearing we will begin with will be the public hearing on item one, the Burton Gene Minor Subdivision Final Plat at 196 Gene Drive, which I think is on page seven?
Seven.
Seven? And if we have... All right. Floor is open.
My name's Danny Best. I'm a land surveyor. I surveyed out the tract. Basically, Mr. Burton owns some land, about 10 acres there. Wanted to sell off a little less than three quarters of an acre to this town and build a site. That's what we're doing. It's outside the city limits, inside the UGB. This is on Rock Creek Road. If you go north of Winchester on 41, you turn right on Rock Creek Road, you go out that way, a little bit. Gene Drive is a little steep hill. If you get up on top, and it's on the right up there.
All right. Thank you. The floor is open for anyone who wishes to address this issue. I will let you know in advance that all public hearings, if you are going to come up and speak, please clearly and slowly state your name and address, and you will be allowed two minutes to speak. And anyone else who is with you can come up, give their name and their address, and they can defer their minutes to you if they need to. So, on this issue, the floor is open. Having no one come forward to speak for or against this issue, I will close the public hearing on this one and entertain a motion.
Need to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the Burton Gene Drive Minor Subdivision Final Plat, 196 Gene Drive, as published in our document, beginning on page seven, carrying through page 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next public hearing will be on the final plat for the Woodlands, Phase One Minor Subdivision Final Plat on Riley Creek Road, which begins on page 13. Andy?
This is on Riley Creek Road. You said it just passed Inwood Meadows. There's a wooded tract on the right. If you're heading up town, they want to cut off photo lots that front along Riley Creek Road. They're for this, the big transmission power line.
Isn't that one they were gonna drag a road through there from Riley Creek to...
They were... That was planned at one time, but I think that's changed.
Okay. I thought they were gonna connect Ovoca and Riley Creek.
It's not their plans any longer.
Really?
Is this also in the UGB?
This is inside city limits.
Inside city limits, okay. The floor is now open for anyone who wishes to speak on this issue. Same rules applying. Seeing no one to come forward once again for this issue in favor of or against, other than, I think, the owners, I will close the public hearing and open and entertain a motion for this property.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the Woodlands, Phase One Minor Subdivision Final Plat on Riley Creek Road, as published in pages 13 through... Is it 18? No. Seventeen... Oh, 17 came before 18, okay. Through 18. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Final plats are completed. We'll move on to the zoning map and text amendments. These will be public hearings with the same rules and requirements. The first one will be ZMA 220, John Galvin, 515 East Warren Street, and it begins on page 19?
This is for my home. A few weeks ago, I applied for a demolition and construction permit for an old garage, which is an eyesore. We discovered that the home was zoned R2 with a provision that any improvement would automatically revert the home to a C2. So, in order to then move forward with the demolition and the construction permit, I was asking if you would change the zoning to R2, so that I could then go forward with the permit applications.
So you're asking to bring it back to an R2 designated. Is this within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
R2 or R3?
Well, it's gonna be resented to R2.
What says R3 is reasonable, Zach. Damn. I thought it would be R2.
Page 25. 25? Says R3?
Well, that's the... You got a head upstairs. That's the next amendment, the next case.
Oh, the next case. 'Cause I started saying, I was looking here, and the paperwork says R2.
That's what I was... I was getting confused there.
Do we have a recommendation?
The staff gives the request, favorable recommendation. And remember that we're just sending a recommendation to the board...
To the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Anyone that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing on this and entertain a motion.
I guess we move to approve the recommendation of the zoning change?
My second.
Okay. Any discussion you wanna have before we...
I'd like to know how old this built. I mean, because I know there's some homes in that area that are kind of, I guess it was more historical. Do you know how old that house is?
The home is... Was built, I believe, 1950.
Oh, okay.
Have a picture of the garage, if you'd like to see it.
Sure. Thank you.
It's old. I don't think it was built at the same time.
Oh.
It's got a dirt floor.
Oh, okay.
Like I said, it's an eyesore, and this is what I was hoping to add.
Okay, okay.
Go on, see. It's separate from the house. He's not looking to touch the house in any way, so... No further discussion? Very well. Those in favor of approving or recommending to the Board of Mayor and Alderman a favorable recommendation on ZMA 2020, John Galvin, 515 East Warren Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The recommendation carries affirmative. The next on ZMA 221, a Kings Lane property in Kings Lane. And that'll begin on page... Did you say 25?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Dan. We are proposing to develop a duplex condominium subdivision to add some additional housing options along Kings Lane, for retirees, for individuals that are needing, you know, more of a condominium style. Oh, my name's Lily Burton, and my address is 106 Autumn Lane in Tallahassee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No, that's okay. I was done. That's about it.
On this page, it says, on page 25, it says the proposed zoning is high-density residential, but it says C2. Is that a typo?
Read.
I'm on page 25.
Page 25 at the top.
Proposed zoning is H... Oh, there is a typo. Should be R3.
Okay.
Designation. Yeah, the paperwork says R3. Designation. Yeah, the paperwork says R3. Now, anybody from the floor wish to discuss this? Seeing no one to discuss in favor of or of against, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Need to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve it. Any discussion? And I might have one question. This is just the request for zoning. They'll still have to submit initials, site plans, and plats, and the whole bit, right?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause I'm looking at 13 buildings, 26 units. That's a major... I like that. Sorry, I like that.
There's a big need for it, for sure.
Yeah, there is. In this town, we need housing bad.
Mm-hmm. That kinda has them.
Any other discussion?
I like that layout with the common area. It looks good. It's cool.
Really nice.
Is that over where the old ball field used to be?
It's right behind there.
Between the old Legion building and the surgery center.
Wasn't this a place that we ended up...
It was a site plan that was approved.
Site planned for a self-storage unit?
To do something.
Well, I like this better than a self-storage unit any day.
We've got self-storage going across the street.
Oh, really? Okay. It's still covered.
It's been a major groundbreaking over there.
Okay, so with that, and no more further discussions, then, all those in favor of approving the ZMA 221 Kings Lane property, request for zoning change to R3, as printed in the documents from 25 to 31, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The recommendation is affirmative to the mayor and Alderman. The next one, ZMA 222, properties on North Washington Court, by North Washington Court.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg O'Neil, Attorney from Winchester, Tennessee, and I represent, represented originally Barbara Sanders, who unfortunately has been hospitalized and not gonna be here today. And then, in the midst of it, all the other property owners that are on North Washington Court have requested this zoning change. This board, I think, is familiar with the history of this. Back in October of 2009, it was discovered that the city underwent a comprehensive zoning map, a bid in accordance with the state statute, and the letter of law was complied with as far as a notice of a public hearing. This property was changed with that zoning map from... It's been exclusively, by the way, residential for 60 years, all of these people, and it's gonna continue to be residential for the foreseeable future. It was changed from R2 to I1 for some reason, and the property owners now requesting that the zoning be changed back to the appropriate zoning of R2. As I said, it's always been a residential street. The only way they found out about this, this board was considering an adjacent property owner zoning change for the development of a storage unit development, and this came up during that. Like I said, in your honor... Not your honor, excuse me. I've been in front of the court all day.
It's all right.
This board knows that the great, great majority of practically 99% of zoning changes come at the instance of property owners themselves. And, of course, there's no notice issues when that's done. For whatever reason, like I said, the letter of law was complied with. No notice was given to these people that the property was being rezoned, went to place. And I've explained to them that, you know, what they need to do is bring this before the board today, make the request, and be back to R2. And I believe R2 was the appropriate zoning, yes.
These are all... Are these all single-family residential?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue from the floor? This is a public hearing, as we said. Seeing no one to speak for or against, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to approve the zoning change. With favorable to the Board and Alderman.
My second.
I have a motion in second to send ZMA 222 Properties on North Washington Court zoning change request from C2 to R2 to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a favorable report. Any discussion from anyone?
Yes. I want this to happen, but I'm concerned that this is... I mean, if you look at the map, I'm almost concerned that it would be considered spot zoning. Do you think?
No, that's the reason why they're all built at one time, and not one single person.
Oh, okay.
Because that would have been spot zoning.
Gotcha. All right.
And you've got all of those defined.
Okay.
And if I recall, because we were part of this board when this incident happened, the subject was brought up of the fact that these people had residential housing, that they couldn't sell as residential housing because of the I1 designation.
Yeah, that was correct. They could have sold it. The issue is, they can't get underwriting for it. For somebody to buy it, unless it gets destroyed beyond 50%, then they can't rebuild. That'd be a...
Yeah. It has to be an industrial thing then. So this just gives them back their rights on the property.
Yes.
That's what it does.
It's my understanding, Chairman, that the solution to that is in the works pending the rezoning. The young lady did lose a sale temporarily because of the I1 zoning, but as I understand it, she has a new contract extension, subject to getting back to the appropriate zoning designation.
Oh, okay. All right.
And each of these people has requested this? Is everybody...
Yeah, they have some application for this.
Okay, gotcha.
And the recommendation for...
Give a favorable recommendation.
Give a favorable recommendation, okay. So the motion is to give a favorable recommendation to ZMA 222 Properties on North Washington Court to change the zoning from I1 to R2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That recommendation favorable is approved. Now we go to ZTA 215. ZTA?
Yeah.
Oh, text amendment, okay, yeah.
Is that a map amendment?
A map amendment. This is for non-conforming provisions, zoning ordinance, Article 7.
Eight.
I'm sorry. I didn't see the last I. Eight. And I keep that someone... 37?
Yes.
Lee, can you give us a little...
What I was trying to do was, this section is to get the zoning warrants more in line with the state.
Where do?
Yeah, Tennessee Code 37-7, or 13-7-208 is the main reason I did list some substantial changes to existing regulations. But all these are just regulations that are from the state law, except for the third one about non-conforming laws. And what it mainly deals with, except for the non-conforming laws, is commercial and industrial buildings. They're given a little bit... They're given protection through that act, so we have to, you know, it doesn't differentiate in our ordinance, but that's the purpose of the amendment.
So it's actually, the biggest changes are in this element 3.3? Or in the whole 3?
It would be in the... Big, we're replacing the entire article, but...
The entire Article 3, okay.
Well, no, Article 8.
Oh.
And the text is attached. Starts on 39.
So this is a public hearing on this. If there'd be anyone who wants to step forward and add Seeing no one step forward, either in favor or against, I'll entertain a... I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Need to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a motion in second to send favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman on Element ZTA 215, on the non-conforming provisions in the zoning ordinance, Article 8, as printed on pages 37 through 43?
42.
42. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Recommendation favorable is sent. Next is CZTA 4, accessory dwelling unit, Franklin County zoning resolution, Article 3. Give us a little background, Lee.
I received a letter from the planning director from Franklin County. They were wanting to do a... Add a term and a definition for that term into their zoning resolution. And being that we're in the... That zoning ordinance also is in our UGB area down there, they need a recommendation from this planning commission.
Looks like the definition is living quarters situated within an accessory structure. This is a public hearing, so if anyone has a comment... This is a public hearing, so if anyone has a comment, please feel free to step up. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion first.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second to send a favorable recommendation back to the Franklin County?
Into Franklin County Commissioners.
Living quarters situated within an accessory structure. Scott? That sounds kind of.
Sounds what?
Kind of. I mean, within an accessory structure, I mean, that could be almost any kind of stuff.
What does that mean, Lee?
I guess they're going to allow, like, mother-in-law apartments or, you know, over a garage or?
That's kind of what I figured.
I could see something like that, but it also, it could be a garage, it could be just about any.
Whatever their definition of an accessory structure is.
I think it's all right.
Well, the mother-in-law thing, obviously. I don't disagree with that.
Absolutely.
Didn't we do something similar to this for those?
We had to do those.
The ones for the people?
Healthcare.
Healthcare thing?
Yeah. But it has to be, it has to be one of those specific.
Yeah, and this doesn't limit them on that.
Well, no, it just allows them to build up and up. I guess a dwelling unit on a lot that isn't going to be the main, I guess, the main house, the main dwelling unit, so. So I guess it's, you know, it'll be an accessory dwelling, what's called.
Why does that come our way again? What, why did we vote on this if it's over in Winchester?
Because we're a regional planning commission.
Yeah, being that our region goes in there, this is the zoning regulations that's going to, going to affect citizens.
So they have to submit.
The people in the UGB, and so that's the reason why. It's, it had to do with that chapter, was it 1101 back in 99, where they created these coordinating committees between the cities and counties, county-wide development plan, and that was one of the agreements when you had a regional planning commission, that if there's more than one regional planning commission that has jurisdiction in that area, then each one of them has to give a favorable recommendation for any changes in the zoning resolutions in the county.
I knew that, but kind of forgot it, I guess. It seemed kind of odd. I mean, it didn't really.
I guess, 20 years ago when they were thinking it up, I mean.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to send a favorable recommendation to the Franklin County zoning, excuse me, the Franklin County Commission.
Yeah.
On CZTA 4, accessory dwelling unit, Franklin County zoning resolution, Article 3. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Recommendation favorable carries. Lee, one of these things, was it, was it, one of these final plats or whatever is actually in one of our UGBs?
Yeah.
Does that mean?
That's what the first one was.
Does that mean it's got to go to the county commission?
No.
Because I know that new law requires.
Well, that's only if they, if they pass a resolution in any one of the counties that we're in, that states that, you know, they're going to enforce that rule, then it will be in effect, but they have to, the county commissioners have to approve a resolution.
To do that?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. So with that, any other new business to come before this body tonight? Our next meeting will be Monday, August the 20th?
Yeah. Well, I was going to request a special call, one for July 30th, just for one item, you know, just need four people here. Won't, it won't be like an agenda, like a normal agenda, kind of, you know, it'll just be that item, and then, you know, it's just a subdivision out on Leffordville Road, it's just a two-lot subdivision. And.
Well, 30th is okay for me for that. And I think most of all of us responded that we would be okay with the 30th for a special call meeting. You'll need to get the notes out of.
Right, right. You know, we've got one agenda item on.
So we can go ahead and plan the call meeting then.
Okay. All right.
Nothing else to come before, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second has been made to adjourn the planning commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The planning commission is now closed.
We still have the.
We have the zoning.
Board of zoning appeals.
Board of zoning and appeals.
Sit back now. Not so quick.
So we will open the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and we know that we have a quorum. I don't see an agenda lead, but.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
I missed that.
The only agenda items we have, we don't have any unfinished or new business, but we do need to read and approve the meeting minutes for March the 19th and April the 16th. Any additions or corrections?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the Board of Zoning and Appeals as printed. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Minutes are approved, and that's all we have to do. I recommend, I entertain a motion to adjourn the.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second has been made to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Meeting's over. Thank you very much, everyone, for your help.